Planning Commission, could all please stand for the pledge allegiance? Okay, roll call. All present except Bob Zabinski is absent. Approve agenda for Thursday, June 8th, 2021. Is there any additions or deletions on the agenda?
No, sir.
Got a motion?
Second?
Got a motion and second to approve the agenda for June 8th. All in favor, same by saying aye?
Aye.
Both same side, pass with all present. First one, conditional use. The Way Park Planning Commission will hold a public meeting at City Hall, 19 13th Avenue North at 6:30 or soon thereafter, Tuesday, June 8th, 2021, to hear the following request. Request of Leroy Ludwig, DBA Nature's View Landscaping, and Robert W. Zabinski, 2003 revocable trust for conditional use permit to allow for landscaping business in A1 agricultural residential district. The property is legally described as 157.83 acres, southwest 4, 2705 County Road 6 vicinity. All in the city of Way Park, Stearns County, Minnesota. Public hearing opens at 6:32.
Planning Commissioners, folks in the audience tonight, I'm gonna try to get a little closer to the mic here. As you're aware, this is a request from Leroy Ludwig of Nature's View Landscaping, owner-operator, and Bob Zabinski, his property trust for the conditional use permit to allow a landscaping business in the A1 agricultural rural residential district. The intent would be to essentially split off a northern portion of the property, kind of exact details to be determined, of the Zabinski property, sell that to Mr. Ludwig, that he would develop that both for his business and residential purposes. Do kind of a live-work situation there. The request is very, very similar in nature to what we reviewed last year about this time, in a different location. Recall at that time, the proposed proposal was for a vacant property along Graniteview Road, not too far from where Nature's View Landscaping used to operate before selling that property. Since that time, they've kind of looked at other opportunities in the area and kind of settled on this area as a potential use. Development of the home would not require specific approval aside from having to plat the property to prepare it for development, as we don't allow for construction on a non-planted property for non-agricultural type use. But the landscape business component does. This property would be developed, it's my understanding still, as a kind of a shouse, what they've kind of been termed, post-ram construction residential and storage building. The applicant had previously coordinated with an architect and builder, and at least some cursory discussions with the city building official on plans for the property when they were looking at the earlier location, so most of those aspects would carry over to this site. It's really only the site that changes more so than the kind of business proposal itself. The applicant has submitted the site plan with the proposed configuration, which is provided in the packet. I'll scroll down to that here. Fairly basic, fairly straightforward site plan, indicating kind of the storage areas, the options for either farming of the area, or a future tree field for the landscaping component, parking areas, kind of the parking lot area and the driveway. I'm working under the assumption that the business operates essentially the same as it was previously applied for. Five days a week in the summer, no holidays or weekends, and summer hours typically 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Winter hours being typically 12 hours after a snowfall to accommodate plowing activities that the business also does. The structure would have residential space for the owners and an office and storage space as well. Equipment will also be stored outside, including trucks and trailers and rock bins for storing of decorative landscape rock and mulch. There could be, excuse me, potentially pile areas for brush, black dirt, and boulders. We feel that they're far enough away from the property and not out of line for what you typically see in the ag district, that I don't believe there'd be a need for specific screening unless the applicant so chooses, as long as the storage areas adhere to the submitted and approved plans. The proposed driveway and parking areas are denoted as gravel, typically, and we've run into this in the past, particularly in the ag area. The city ordinance and its writing notes that if you establish new park or driving areas, they're supposed to be hard surface, but given the rural nature, in the past, we've been comfortable having an allowance for gravel parking areas for more rural areas, and I would propose to extend that to this property as well. Plating of the property would be required again, prior to any commencement of building permit or construction activity. I did take a look at this to see if it was something that would be viable for administrative lot split, but doesn't seem that that would be workable with this. There's plenty of room on the property to plat the parcel and meet the 10-acre minimum for a new parcel, as well as the access requirements. In this case, County Route 137. I would recommend approval of the conditional use permit with the following conditions. Number one, property will need to be platted prior to issuance of any building permit or commencement of any construction activities. Number two, existing parking areas are exempted from need to be hard surface with concrete or asphalt, provided they are not enlarged due to limited, excuse me, that's a typo. Basically, I would note that the allowance would be for the parking and driving areas to be exempted and allowed to be as gravel. Parking is not allowed on County Road 137. Number four, curb opening access is subject to review approval of Stearns County Highway Department. Number five, parking and storage areas shall adhere to plans as reviewed by Planning Commission and/or City Council unless otherwise approved by city staff. Number six, utilization of building or portions thereof shall be subject to review and approval as per City of Way Park building official. All exterior and interior work shall be subject to necessary building, plumbing, electrical, and other permits as deemed required by city staff. Number seven, all necessary construction activities shall be completed to satisfaction of City of Way Park building official prior to commencement of any activities in impacted areas. Number eight, any new exterior signage shall require a permit prior to installation or fabrication of signage to provide for review and approval. Number nine, ground and/or pylon signs shall require a footing inspection prior to construction to confirm compliance with city code requirements. And number 10, last proposed condition, at time of city sewer water may be made available to the property, the property will be required to connect to them at abandoned and steel private septic and well facilities within one year. I know that there's no intended plan for that at all, it's just a standard caveat that's in the city code, we just like to reiterate for people. Those would be my recommended conditions. We can open it up for discussion or any questions, or if the applicant would like to speak as well.
Does the applicant want to speak on his behalf, or go up to the podium, state your name?
My name's Leroy Ludwig, I'm with Nature's View Landscaping. Yes, we have a proposal last fall, the property didn't work out last year, so we chose this site as well. We operated just down the road for the previous 15 years without any issues, I think we'd kind of continue the same business just in this location again. Minimal traffic, we don't have customers coming into the location. It's more of a storage place for the equipment, the rock, the decorative stuff that we carry on-site, gets brought to the property after that. Like you said earlier, no nights, no weekends work. Currently have, I think, seven employees, so they would come in in the morning, load the trucks, leave again. End of the day, come back, get their personal vehicles, and leave again. So pretty minimal, like to keep it natural-looking, being a landscaper, I guess we'd like to improve with trees on the property lines and beautify the area as well, just to keep it, keep it looking nice and neat. I guess that's all I had. Unless you guys have any questions for me at all?
Does anybody else from the public want to put any input, or? Can we get a motion to close the public?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion and second to close the public hearing, all in favor, same by saying aye?
Aye.
Public hearing closed at 6:41.
Make a motion to approve the Nature's Landscaping with the staff recommendations as part of that motion. All number, all, 1 through 10.
Second that motion.
We got a motion and second to approve with conditions listed. All in favor, same by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, pass with all present.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Leroy, the date on the council action for this is kind of TBD, but we expect it'll be sooner rather than later, probably within the next couple of weeks, I will keep you posted.
Item number five. Request of Roy Underlander, variance from City Ordinance Section 52.49.03, Section C, to allow construction of accessory structure garage in the front yard. The property is legally described as Lot 3, Block 1, Under Sand Hill, Platte 2, 8461 Old Highway Road North, all in the city of Way Park, Stearns County, Minnesota. Public hearing open at 6:42.
Did we, I think we may have jumped ahead on... Did I have an error?
Yeah, they're number different. How's it going on the list that was listed on the public hearing notice?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is...
Sorry about that, the public hearing get opened on, is a request from SSJ, KJ Properties LLC, variance from City Ordinance Section 52.49.05 subdivision C1 to allow construction of a fence in the front yard. The property is legally described as Lot 1, Block 1, Day Lily, Platte 2, 715 First Street South, all in the city of Way Park, Stearns County. Public hearings open at 6:43 for the right one.
I apologize for the error there, we had two variances, which is kind of a rarity, so I may have gotten them crossed up. This, this request is a front yard fence variance for Day Lily Salon and Spa on First Street South. The request was from the owners and operators of the salon for variance from formal City Ordinance Section 52.49.05 subdivision B1, to allow a fence in the front yard, which the city defines as anywhere beyond the front of the building closest to the road or the front edge of the property. Day Lily opened recently in that building that they constructed, and recently submitted a building permit application for the fence where we identified the issue during the review. We found that the fence was to be proposed in the established front yard, which is prohibited by our ordinance, even though there are a handful of other fences that are kind of grandfathered in essentially in town. Staff reached out to applicants to inform them of this, and we were advised that the fence is being pursued to provide a kind of a minimum level of security and screening for employees and patrons of the business, largely, largely women, due to trespass issues that are associated with the neighboring motel property. Staff advised that they would either need to withdraw the building permit, resubmitted updated application that removed the fence from the front yard, basically pull it back a little bit, or apply for a variance to formally consider the approval of the fence in the front yard. The fence in question is a, basically a traditional six-foot vinyl privacy-type fence, which is pretty common for commercial and residential applications. The request is to take the fencing to the property line up closest to the road at 715 First Street South. I really don't see a concern with this in this case, given that it's not something that was created by the, by the property owner. It's, it's something that's being attributed to a neighboring parcel, it's out of, kind of not under their control, and given it is for at least a minimum level of security to force people away from coming right across the property there, particularly in the evening hours when they get a lot of their patronage, I think it's reasonable to consider it in this case. I do think that they have a practical difficulty in this, in this case, and I'd be supportive of the variance, so I would recommend approval.
How far does this extend down from their driveway for like people to leave the fence? Any view blockage for customers leaving the lot, coming in and out?
That, I'm not sure, I haven't overlaid it with, with the actual imagery. We could, we could set it as a condition to pull it back enough that, you know, to ensure visibility, say 10 feet or so, I don't think there'd be an issue with that. I'm, I don't know what the intent was to actually take it to the line, but that was basically how we process a request. I would be comfortable with a, you know, a minimum to pull it back five or 10 feet to allow a little bit of visibility, that's entirely reasonable.
You know, commissioners have any questions, or we'll open up to the public? It is a public hearing, if people want to come up and speak for or against, or?
I move to close the public hearing. Second?
We got a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor, same by saying aye?
Aye.
Public hearing closed at 6:49.
Oh, actually, if I could interject to Mark's question, you can see the, the actual line does allow for quite a bit of right-of-way there. On your screen, it's on this, I've got it up on the display.
Oh, there it is.
Because we have Boulevard that's in there as well, so it's, it's pretty safely away from the curb line. But they can go as far as the red line there.
They put the curb and the road and the amount of cars that uses, just want to make sure that a customer don't get hit.
Yeah, that makes sense, but if they go to their, to their front line and not the curb, that's, that's plenty safe.
Okay.
You say we don't need that second condition?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, given that we know there's significant Boulevard there, I don't think so.
If it's a variance, we need to go through the finding of facts.
Yeah, I would recommend it.
Finding of facts will not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, convenience, or general welfare of the neighborhood for the city. Hurt anybody? The yes or no questions. Will be harmonious with the applicable scientific and general objectics of the comprehensive plan of the city ordinance.
Yes.
Will be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained, so to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity, and will not change the essential character of that area.
Yes.
Not be hazardous or disturbing to existing or future neighbor uses.
Yes.
Serve as adequate, adequately by essential public facilities and services, including streets, police, and fire, protection drainage structures, refuse disposal, water, and sewer systems, and school. Will not create excessive additional requirements of, at public cost for public facilities and services, and will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community.
Yes.
Will not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, equipment, and conditions of operation that will be detrimental to any person's property or the general welfare because of excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, glare, or odors.
Yes.
Will have a vehicle approach to the property, which are so designed as not to create traffic congestion or interference with traffic or surrounding public thoroughfares.
Yes.
Will have adequate facilities to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the purpose use.
Yes.
Not result in destruction, loss, damage of natural scenic or historic nature of majority importance.
Yes.
Conform to the type of uses that are generally permitted within the district.
And yes.
Finding of facts, give us the motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna make a motion that we recommend approval of the variance request.
Second. What's the conditions?
The one condition.
One condition? Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve with condition, all in favor, same by saying aye?
Aye.
Both same sign, pass with everybody present. I'm not sure which one is, but. Now, item six. Request of Roy Underlander, variance from City Ordinance Section 52.49.03, Section C, to allow construction of an accessory structure garage in the front yard. The property is legally described as Lot 3, Block 1, Under Sand Hill, Platte 2, 8461 Old Highway Road North, all in the city of Way Park, Stearns County, Minnesota. Public hearing is opened at 6:53.
Planning Commission, we received this variance request from the owners after having some discussions with them about constructing a new home on the property. Not unlike the last request, which covered fences, we, the city also has a general prohibition on putting up an accessory structure, either a garage or shed, in the defined front yard of the property. We have that in all areas of the city, regardless of whether it's a larger five or 10-acre parcel like this, or if it's a more of a postage stamp size lot in the middle of Old Way Park. This property, being on Old Highway North, was previously platted in preparation of eventual development of residential home on the property. It's a family property, multiple parcels in that area. The proposed garage in its location, given the size of the property, would still be approximately 170 feet away from the, from the property line along Old Highway Road North, and about 60 feet away from the northern property boundary located, you see here on, on the screen, on the right-hand side. These are pretty significant areas, and this property is also heavily wooded, I've seen it firsthand, reviewed it firsthand, and the wooded areas would heavily screen, if not, if not all, nearly all of the structure from the road. This garage is proposed solely for private and personal use and not associated with any proposed business use. Always something we want to bring up in a case like this, because that, that would change the dynamic. I, as I mentioned, I have reviewed this property onsite with the applicant, and I believe that there is adequate undue hardship and practical difficulties due to the configuration of the property and the desire to avoid impacting sloped, sloped areas or clear additional old growth trees, as well as preventing impact to a longstanding family trail that runs through the middle of the property. This, the layout that they have, to me, seems to make the most sense. I would concur with the assessment of the property that was provided by the property owner. They submitted a very thorough assessment of the property and justifications for the variance, and I think they have a solid case. I, I do believe that justification exists, and that practical difficulties have been established for the, for this request, and that approval of the variance would not adversely affect neighboring properties in this case. But I would recommend approval of the request with the following two conditions. Number one, the garage shall be located in the area depicted by the site plans submitted as part of the variance request application. Minor revisions or deviations may be approved administratively, subject to my approval. Number two, the garage is subject to all standard ordinance and building code requirements and building permit shall be obtained prior to commencement of construction activities.
Commissioners have any questions? Public, want to put input in?
I'm Barry Center, and I live at 8402 North Old Highway Road, and I directly face this property. So I have concerns in that there are no stipulations in this variance for construction type, or that the wooded area in front has to be maintained as a wooded area. If that wooded area were to be taken down, and they were to put up a pole shed, it would be in direct line of sight every time I stood in my front yard. And I'd just like to know what type of construction does the siding have to match the home? Because I'm going to be looking at the backside of this garage if those trees are taken down. And there's no, there's no stipulation in the variance that that wooded area has to be maintained, so that this building is out of sight.
As far as the exterior treatment, the city, the remainder of the city code does maintain that the garage or accessory structure does have to match the general treatment, in that it has to have siding. It can't be a pole shed, it can't be metal, that sort of thing, it doesn't have to match exactly, but it has to be substantially similar to the home. So that, that probably covers that aspect. I've seen the plans, and they are residential in nature.
Right, and that stipulation was there, that we were not allowed to put pole sheds up if we built accessory buildings, and yet the neighbor across the road has a pole shed. And even though those stipulations, and that was not while we were under Way Park, but those same stipulations were there, and he was allowed to build a pole shed, so now the precedent is set. So I'm just...
I can't attest anything that was done when, before it was in the city.
I understand that, but I'm, I'm saying that I want to make sure that that's there, and I would like to know what we're going to be looking at. You know, and is there a stipulation that that wooded area has to be maintained as a wooded area?
The city doesn't typically have a prohibition on clearing trees on private property, but the planning commission and the city council can place conditions of approval that would state that...
I mean, your whole basis for approval is that no one will be able to see it, and that's only provided that that wooded area stays put.
That's, that's not the whole basis for approval.
Well, I understand.
A, a portion of it.
And I understand that there are probably, with that property, there are probably reasons for putting it there as to... And I understand that there are probably, with that property, there are probably reasons for putting it there as the slope, um, assuming that there is a hill on the backside of that property from what I've seen from the other side. So I, I understand why the, the variance is being asked for, but I just would like to point out that, for me, that, that building will always be visible if those trees are taken down. And I will be looking at the backside of a garage, not the front of a garage, not the decorative side of the garage, but the backside of the garage, and it will always be visible from my home, in my front yard. So I'd just like to make sure that there are stipulations in place that this has to be, uh, harmonious, as you put it in your reading of facts, with the neighborhood.
We could, the planning, I can't say, we, the planning commission and the, the, the city council could place condition that, uh, essentially a, a clearing plan for trees would be required, that it can't be cleared any more than the footprint of the garage is pi- is pictured in this plan. That's something that can be required as a condition. I would ask that the, the applicants speak to that, if it's something that, that they would be okay with. You know, it's, it's ultimately up to the, i- if this moves past the planning commission, it's ultimately up to the city council. But I would ask for their input to see, you know, if, if that's something that works for them with this particular request as well.
Is there also stipulations being that it is built, being built in front of the house as to the height of it? Is it designed to house an RV and it's going to be twenty feet tall?
It has to meet all other standard, uh, all other standard requirements for a garage.
Which would be, is, is that allowed?
It, it can be twenty feet tall.
Okay.
And we would probably ask that the, the plans that you showed me be submitted with the, um, that we could get them to the city council for, for their review. But the, the plans that I reviewed are not, uh, a twenty foot tall. It's basically a, it's a, a larger residential garage, but it's not a twenty foot tall massive garage. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be out of place in, in any of the much smaller subdivisions in the city.
All of us have accessory buildings in that area, so of course it would, you know, it would not be out of place. And I don't, I don't have a problem with them building the building. I just want to make sure that there is some consideration made to the fact that we would be the only neighbor that would see it from, from our, from our property and the front of our property, and it would greatly affect the view from our property. If it were built, you know, if things were not done correctly. Not saying that that's going to happen by any stretch of the means, just pointing out that it does affect us. So, that's all I have.
Okay. Want to step up and state your name and?
Good evening, gentlemen, my name is Roy Undersander. I'm currently at eight-five-zero-three Old Highway Road North. That's where we're living right now until we get the house built. And, uh, apologize, we haven't had a chance to meet you folks yet. So, I'll just address the two issues that were brought up right away. As, uh, John mentioned, uh, we've got the plan already designed for the garage, and it does meet all the other stipulations of the, of the code that's in there for, uh, buildings. And actually, our intent is to.
Roy, just a, a second, can you put that maybe perhaps down on the, uh, we can put it on the overhead display if you'd like. There should be a little laser dot there. If you could tilt it a little bit. Yeah, there's a, there's an art to it. There you go.
All right, so this is the, uh, plan that's, uh, designed for the garage itself. But to one of your concerns, so we've even got stone and the siding and nice windows going on that side of the garage as well. As far as, I don't want to commit myself to every single tree of what I will or will not clear, but I can tell you, my intent is, part of the reason we set it back so far is we do want to be a little more obscured. So my intent is to, uh, keep it wooded. The only thing I really see clearing out is the buckthorn, which is an invasive species anyway. Um, and so I would intend to keep, uh, the rest of the trees there. And actually, that was part of the argument in the request, is that there are some nice oak trees, uh, particularly along that front too, which is why I didn't, I set the house back as far as I did as well, so we can maintain those and, and keep all of that there. Um, so, um, hopefully, that shouldn't be a big problem, uh, for your concerns. And the, uh, last part that I would say, if, can we, John, can we go back to the other? Diagram then? But I, again, it's kind of designed as you can see, so I intend to have a driveway, which is actually already cut in, in there through the trees. So I intend to have the driveway into kind of a, a courtyard area. So that's also part of the reason why, uh, you know, working to have the building that way. We're trying to take advantage of the hill for the walkout basement of the house. That's why the house is set back as far as it is. And, uh, and then, so then it'd be a nice courtyard. So again, it should be very aesthetically pleasing, uh, and match. And, and honestly, in, to probably to your concern too, in the wintertime when the leaves are down, it'll be a little more visible, but it should be, uh, very well, uh, coordinated with the area. So that's it for me, uh, standing by unless, if, and you gentlemen have other questions. Okay, thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else have anything they want to put in?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing, all in favor sing by saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearing closed at seven oh six. We need to use the same finding of facts, John. Okay, um, commissioners, we'll do a finding of facts again. Will not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, convenience, or general welfare of the neighborhood or, or the city.
Yes.
Yes. Sorry.
Will be harmonious with the apropos of fif- specific and general objectives of the comprehensive plan of the city and this ordinance.
Yes.
Will design, does, will be designated, constructed, operated, and maintained so to be harmless, appropriate in the appearance with existing or intended character of the general vicinity and will not change the essential character of the area.
Yes.
Not be hazardous or disturbing to existing or future neighbors.
Yes.
Served adequately by essential public facilities and services, including streets, police, fire, protection, drainage structures, refuge disposal, water, sewer, and schools.
Yes.
Not create, uh, excessive additional requirements of public cost, public fac- facilities and services, and will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community.
Yes.
Not involve use of activities, processes, materials, equipment, and conditions of operation that will be detrimental to any person's property or the general welfare because of excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, glare, or odors.
Yes.
Will have a vehicle approaches to the property, which are so designed not to create traffic congestion or interference with traffic and surrounding public thoroughfares.
Yes.
Have adequate facilities to provide sufficient off-street parking and loading space to serve the purpose use.
Yes.
Not result in the destruction, loss, damage of natural scenic or historic features of major importance.
Yes.
Form to the type of uses that are generally permitted within the district.
Yes.
Findings of facts, could I get a motion?
Uh, Mister Chair, I, I make a motion that we recommend approval of the variance application with the two conditions.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve with conditions, all in favor sing by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, pass with all present.
Thank you. And for those, uh, here, so I'm just going to take a look at the calendar here, bear with me. See if we get a projected date for the city council. The city council doesn't have an associated public hearing, this is the public hearing for the request. But I think we may be looking at a city council meeting on the, either the twenty-first or the twenty-eighth, where the, the three requests, um, from tonight would be reviewed and decided on, uh, by the council. But I, I will let you know as applicants, uh, as soon as I, we have that pinned down, it's not always, uh, immediate unfortunately. Nothing additional from me.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor sing by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, seven eleven.